Calling the Committee on Health and Human Services and the Committee on Agriculture and Environment, Joint Hearing for 1:00 P.M. This meeting is being present with me is Co-Chair Mike Gabbard, Senator Gabbard, as well as Senator Rhodes. This meeting is being streamed live on YouTube. In the unlikely event that we have to abruptly end this hearing due to technical difficulties, the committee will reconvene to discuss any outstanding business on Friday, March 14, 2025, 1:00 P.M. in this room, Room 225. For those on Zoom, your audio will be muted and video disabled until shortly before this your turn to testify. Each testify will have one minute to testify. So please be brief. We have a lot to hear. If there's a technical glitch during your time to testify, we may have to move on to the next person due to time constraints. I will be reading a list of individuals who submitted written testimony for each measure. We apologize if the closed captioning does not accurately transcribe the names. If you're interested in reviewing the written testimony, please go to legislators' website. You'll find a link on the status page for the measure. We appreciate your understanding and remind you that the committee does have your testimony that I reviewed. So I encourage you to use your time to either add additional comments or stand on your written testimony. First up, we have HB 256, HB 2 relating to environmental protection. For this, we have Department of Health in support. Thank you. Next, we have Fraser Blaylock for ReWorld in support. Come on up.
Madam Chair, Chair Gabbard. Thank you very much, Fraser Blaylock from ReWorld. I submitted written testimony and I stand on my testimony, but I did want to draw your attention to an art of media release today from the EPA saying that today was the announced the Day of Deregulation by the federal EPA. So this bill would ensure that the standards that are now in place for waste-to-energy facilities, specifically, you know, the H Power facility on the island, will stay intact regardless of whether the EPA backtracks on any air or solid waste regulations and also if the state wants to go more stringent, okay, that's okay too, but we just don't want to backslide.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have Mike Ull, Energy Justice Network, providing comments. Mr. Ull, are you present on Zoom?
Yes, I am. Mahalo for having me. Mike Ull with Energy Justice Network. We support this bill, but recognize that the bill basically just maintains the status quo. Even if the federal government were to weaken the standards, the state already has the authority to keep stronger standards. And so the potential loophole in the bill was already fixed on the House side. What we would encourage you to do is fix the existing problem with the current regulations that allows the two older burners, the 35-year-old two older burners that they have, to be missing half of their pollution control devices. They have no controls in place for controlling nitrogen oxides that trigger asthma attacks and no controls in place to reduce the most toxic chemicals like dioxins and mercury. The third burner at the plant has these. About 90% of other incinerators in the country also has these, but the old ones don't. And we would love to see the standards that whole plugged by the state so that they put in the controls that should protect all residents in the state. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Ted Bowlen, Climate Protector Hawaii in support. Thank you very much. Melody Aduha, Environment Caucus of the Democratic Party of Hawaii in support. Michael Becker in support. Robert Colbertson in support. Mary Tu in support. Diane Ware in support. Fred Hofer in support. Janice Palma-Glinney in support. Catherine Fry in support. Anybody else wishing to testify in HB 256? Okay, come on up. You have one minute. Angela?
Angela Melody Young cares, testifying in strong support. So why should we care about pollution? And how does it harm our health? Pollution is an introduction of harmful substances into the air, water, or land. And these substances called pollutants can be natural or man-made. Pollution causes damage to the environment and health. So it is necessary to monitor the pollution produced by trash from the waste-incineration facilities design. And as we examine the environmental impact statement for North Atlantic Incineration Site Design is a federal compliance guide for what we're talking about in this bill, which is the municipal trash design. So for example, you wouldn't want to design something that is flawed. For example, if you're going to design a nursery outside of the guidelines of a standard design, it'd be very bad if there were bad things in the nursery and causes harm to the baby. Right? So, yes.
So present with us, we have Vice Chair Senator Aquino, Vice Chair Senator Richards, also Senator Hashimoto, Senator Favela, and Senator Decoy. Anybody else wishing to testify in HB 256? Members, any questions? Seeing none, moving on. HB 734 relating to wastewater systems. First up, we have Department of Hawaiian Homeland in support. Thank you very much. Next, we have Department of Health in support. Thank you. Hawaii Realtors, Lindsay Garcia in support. Thank you. Nature Conservancy in support, Kim Polinsky. Thank you. Next, we have Stuart Coleman of Y, Wastewater Alternatives and Innovation in support. Thank you. Next, we have Ted Bowlen, Hawaii Reef and Ocean Coalition in support. Come on up.
Thank you, Chair. I'm Governor-elect Chair Gabbard. Vice Chair, members of the committee, Ted Bowlen, on behalf of the Hawaii Reef and Ocean Coalition. This is the first of three bills we have before these committees currently. They're all designed to save costs because we recognize how expensive cesspools are upgrading. So we are working toward things that will make it less expensive. This one is about the rules. We think, I worked on the rules 10 years ago when they were written, and it's about time to update them and to see what has been done in other jurisdictions that might save costs. Strong support for this bill, available for questions. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much. Next, we have Melody Aduha, Environmental Caucus of Democratic Party of Hawaii in support. Hannah Lindley, Surf Rider Foundation Hawaii Region in support. Lynn Mihira, Public Access to Sunscreens in support. Betty Skolnick in support. Robin Knox in support. Sina Pruder in support. Douglas Perrin in support. Christina Comfort in support. Mariko Quinn in support. Anybody else wishing to testify in HB 734? Okay, come on up. Mel, Angela?
Aloha, Angela Melody Young cares, in strong support. So the bill is very thoughtful and considerate. It lists, I think, the county's office? Yeah, oh, the third item, the counties, and also the University of Hawaii because the University of Hawaii performs the study for water quality. And the counties has the infrastructure to carry out the wastewater systems plan. Right? So it requires collaboration. And this was a very ambitious goal in 2017 when Governor Ege signed the Act to mandate that the cesspools convert and be transformed and upgraded. But then it's like, okay, you thought of the plan, but then can we collaborate and actually talk to the offices and figure out what's working, what's not working? Because now there are all these other resos that had to be considered.
Thank you very much, Ms. Young.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, anybody else wishing to testify in HB 734? Members, any questions?
Question for the O-H.
Senator Decoy, the Department of Health? Come on up.
So I just want to ask you, you guys have any current rules and practices that can be changed to make wastewater systems and cesspool upgrades more affordable without compromising water quality?
I'm John Nagato, Department of Health Wastewater Branch. I'm not aware of it from a financial standpoint. We focus on the technical output of the technology. So, you know, we use certain national sanitation foundation criteria, things like that, to make sure that the water quality is good. Cost, price, market price is not a component of that. We leave that up to the market to decide.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, any other questions?
Yep, Department of Health.
Okay, Senator Favela, go on.
So you guys, opposition with comments?
Support.
Support.
Okay. So the one over here with the comments, talking about the education and stuff like this. So what I tried to get at is because right now, the city and most of the community want to make my community to be the process of eliminating our cesspool. But what I don't get yet, and I didn't get it from you guys, so I asked even the city, what is actually the scientific data that's showing that our cesspools need to be upgraded in my district? We're about 10 miles, 15 miles away from the nearest aquifer or water table, water source, even the ocean. And Clean Water Act said that our cesspools in the area is not causing a hazard to quality of water. So we wanted to know why it was us, our community, was the reason? Because it was easier because we have a treatment plan, low ground, but we're not contaminating the ocean. Shouldn't this be a quality of water issue that they should be going after the ones that is contaminating the water instead of making us go through all of this? Even the one that I was kind of concerned about, that the city even said, the Department of Skimmy Wastewater, you know what they said? Families in my community has spent $40,000 to $60,000 to put a septic tank because they had an extended family and they put in another restroom and shower. It cost them $30,000 to put in the shower and out of $60,000 for the septic tank, you know what the Department of City Council said? Oh, sorry. He's still going to have to tighten to the sewer. This is the kind of stuff that, you know, we got to all get on the CFPs, the city and the state, because my community is going to suffer. A majority of my community in this district is 70. 70 years old. They're not going to even afford, even if we try to make it affordable. And in some of the areas, they set a normal sidewalk to convert. All of Eva State has sidewalks, underground wiring. How are you going to put in a sewer past their driveway when they have underground wiring? All of those things takes into consideration the cost and the labor. Back in the day, when they would trick us into doing them, yeah, if we could do our own labor, fill up the cesspool, tie the lines into the vein, have a licensed plumber do them. Cannot do that now. There's all kinds of new laws.
Is there a question?
So that's the question. Why can't we all get together? Because it's going to cost people way more money than what they're thinking it's going to cost.
So let me reframe.
Yeah, please, thank you, Chair.
Okay, regarding, because this rule, the bill refers to rules and regulations to make it cheaper. I believe Senator from Eva wants the Department of Health to consider whether or not certain areas of the state, like Eva,
Yes.
where the cesspools do not affect the water, the water table, or the ocean, whether or not rules and regulations could take that into account and reduce their expenses to possibly be zero?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Is that something to be considered when you look through your rules and regulations?
Not this bill. It actually was looked at and then will be looked at. So when they did the cesspool working group, the whole state was looked at at large. And the cesspool working group, one of the outputs besides the report was the cesspool prioritization tool, which they had the cesspool working group committee put together metrics to determine what priority level cesspools should be ranked at. And then they did that by district. And you can read about that in the report and on the cesspool prioritization tool website with Seegrant and UH. And then there's also a bill last year that passed for UH to add an additional layer to kind of talk about what you're talking about is going into how they're going to implement these sewer implementation. And I can't speak for the city and county or any of the counties, but that's kind of the idea is they identify the cesspools by priority. Now they have to identify where can be sewer, get that conversation going. Because that is, that is the topic.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Chair, follow up?
Okay, Senator Decoy.
So in that case, if they are not sitting over an aquifer or near an ocean, is there a possibility for an exemption for those that are not impacting water resource?
So you said it's sitting over an aquifer or near the ocean?
Yeah.
I mean, they might not be over an aquifer, but then the ocean, yeah, they have to be considered or body of water streams downgrade. Everything's down, always downgrade the water. And the wastewater has to go somewhere.
So, okay, so you put a septic tank in, the septic at Leach Line. What is the difference between the Leach Line off of that septic versus the cesspool if it is leaching?
Has the, has the septic tank in between the disposal system, used to be called a letrial or an absorption bed? That's just a disposal system. So just the place where the water hydraulically is going to go down. But it's a lot cleaner than cesspool wastewater, which is untreated, basically raw wastewater.
Okay, so let's go back to the bill regarding rules and practices to make it cheaper. So taking into account Senator Decoy's concerns, will you, if this bill passes, and it looks like it will, with the $150,000 that you request, will you be able to coordinate with the various counties and the districts to take into account their concerns regarding the prioritization so that it'll be cheaper for them?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, concerns? Okay, Senator Rhodes. Oh, and we have also Senator Keo Kauli present.
Thanks. So I mean, I guess it feels to me like this is sort of overlapping with this whole question of where to put the, a new dump. And after having sat through info briefings on that, it doesn't seem like there's anywhere on Oahu anywhere where you're not affecting an aquifer or the ocean. So I mean, how much? It just doesn't feel like there's really much wiggle room there.
Okay, so to reframe the question.
No, you don't have to reframe the question.
Because this is the bill regarding rules.
Is there any wiggle room?
Wiggle room in our rules?
In terms of where we could place a cesspool that's not going to affect groundwater or the ocean?
I don't believe there's going to be wiggle room for cesspool. I think they're looking for either technological or, or like, one of the specific things is dwelling count. So they have a bill for that separately, but that's kind of just as an example, what they're thinking, us kind of looking at rules that may be allowing faster or...
Okay, okay. Thanks, Chair.
I just want to make sure we're back to the question of rules and practices that would make it cheaper for upgrades. Any comments? I mean, any other questions regarding this specific bill? Okay, seeing none, moving on. We've got a number of bills here, and we need to end by 3:30. So HB 735 relating to wastewater. First up, Department of Health providing comments. Thank you. Next, we have County Clerk, Council Services Division in support. Kaaina Hall, County of Kauai Planning Department in support. Lindsay Garcia, Hawaii Realtors in support. Joel Guy, Hanale Initiative in support. Joel, are you present on Zoom?
Please proceed. Yeah, I just want to stand on our testimony. Thank you very much for the opportunity and strong support.
Thank you very much for being efficient. Stuart Coleman, Y, Wastewater Alternatives and Innovations in support.
Yes, will stand on testimony in support.
Thank you. Ted Capalis, Grassroots Institute of Hawaii in support. Sina Pruder in opposition. Lois Crozer providing comments. Hermena Morita in support. Michael Becker in support. Betsy Skolnick in support. Robin Knox in support. Christina Comfort in support. Mariko Quinn in support. Anybody else wishing to testify in HB 735? Okay, Angela, you have one minute.
Angela Melody Young in strong support. So this would allow the individual wastewater system to serve up to five bedrooms regardless of a number of accessory dwelling units with certain exclusions. So in the discussion from Department of Environmental Services from the county's office, they went over the revised ordinance of Hawaii Chapter 14, which provides instructions for the city council, which a resolution must be requested by the mayor to furnish surveys, maps, plans, and drawings as this was a topic discussed in the Eva Beach District for a concern very similar to this bill. So I think this is a really good idea. Yet also to be considerate of the county's process, there should be more consultation for wastewater management systems to integrate the plans. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else wishing to testify in HB 735? Members, any questions?
Chair.
Okay, Senator Richards.
Department of Health.
Come on up.
What was the reasoning to limiting households on a septic system? And where I'm going with the question is, old-style plantation style, we had gang cesspools. And looking for housing for agriculture, if we had a collection of tiny homes, was there a reasoning for a number of limiting households on a septic system? And that's where it says bedrooms rather than households. Is there a reasoning that you're aware of?
It was my understanding that it's a density issue. You don't want to put too many dwellings on an individual wastewater system because it's, as you add more and more dwellings per system, you're getting more towards like a centralized treatment plan.
But isn't the other side of that coin is if we have these giant households of 10 or 15 bedrooms that do exist, are they governed by the same rules?
Yes, but then they're limited to five bedrooms each dwelling.
Okay, so what we're doing here is just removing, we're going to say, five dwellings with the same number of bedrooms?
Five bedrooms maximum on one individual wastewater system. You could break that up with two dwellings, three bedrooms, two bedrooms, four bedrooms, one bedroom. But you can't have three dwellings.
Currently?
Current.
This would allow us to have five dwellings if we have one bedroom in each dwelling?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, because again, trying to get housing for agriculture. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you very much. Anybody else wishing to testify? Any other questions on HB 735?
Again, quick question, Chair.
Okay, Senator Decoy.
So say if you have three bedrooms, but each bedroom get 20 people living in one.
Right.
How do you justify the usage now?
Can't. That's why our rules aren't like that. Our rules are governed by bedrooms. We know the reality. That's why we don't, we don't push individual wastewater systems. You know, centralized regional treatment plan is better because that goes, the capital count is in the bedroom. But we don't know demographic numbers of everybody's house, so we know reality.
Yeah, just because of the multiple families. So trying to figure out all the usage. Thank you, thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you. Any, any other questions on HB 735? Okay, moving on. HB 879 relating to cesspool conversions. First up, we have Department of Health in support.
Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. The department stands on its written testimony, but we would like to clarify that a separate bill, HB 749, had a cesspool conversion section with positions. But it may have not been clear that, that wasn't heard yet. So we want to make it clear, in order to run this grant program, we need three full-time positions. And if that needs to be added back into this bill, because it was originally there and was removed in place of that other bill, which can get a little confusing, we're just trying to make it clear that in order to run the grant program, we need full-time positions in this bill.
Three full-time positions.
Correct. And then, as you can see in our written testimony, we outlined what those people would be doing in that bill because we already...
Thank you very much. Okay, next, Department of Hawaiian Homeland in support. Okay, next, Ted Bowlen, Hawaii Reef and Ocean Coalition in support.
Thank you, Chairs, Vice Chairs, members of the committee, Ted Bowlen, Hawaii Reef and Ocean Coalition, in strong support. This is the second of the bills I referred to that are about making it more affordable for homeowners. This is for low and moderate income homeowners who live in priority one and two areas and are upgrading their cesspools. They can do that, and the bill raises the amount from 20,000 to 30,000, at least in one version of it, because it's more expensive than $20,000 in most places to upgrade. It's very local. It depends very much on your location, but it can be more expensive, and so it's appropriate to raise the maximum amount. I would say with regard to the grant program and the separate section of the Department of Health, there's a need for both those things. The grants are already started with the Act from 2022. Lots of applications come in. We need people to monitor those. In the future, we will need a separate section of the Department of Health to monitor the, all of the, to administer all of this program because we've got 83,000 cesspools that are going to need upgrading by 2050, and you're going to need people for that. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much. Next, we have Kim Polinsky, Nature Conservancy in support.
Hello, everyone. Kim Polinsky in strong support from the Nature Conservancy. I just collect a lot of the water quality data, and we really see the impact into our groundwater ecosystems, our coastal ecosystems. So as somebody who's collecting that data, I just want to make sure that, as our testimony said, we, me personally, gets to see the data, sees how bad things are. And we appreciate your support in finding ways, any ways, to make this better. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Stuart Coleman, Y, Wastewater Alternatives and Innovations in support.
I will stand on a written testimony and just add that, like the Department of Health said, we're going to really need that other bill, HB 749, to administer those grants. And the program was very successful before. When they listed it, it was all gone. So many applicants within one year. So we hope we just can re-electify that.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Lindsay Garcia, Hawaii Realtors in support. Melody Aduha, Environmental Caucus of Democratic Party of Hawaii in support. Lynn Mihira, Public Access to Sunscreens in support. Eileen Hilton, Winward Coalition in support. Douglas Perrin in support. Nancy Taylor in support. Michael Becker in support. Betsy Skolnick in support. Betsy Scolnick in support. Kevin Fasenda in support. Christina Comfort in support. Marika Quinn in support. Anybody else wishing to testify on HB 879? Come on up, Angela. We have one minute.
Aloha. Angela Melody Young cares in strong support of the pilot program and the appropriation of funds. So this comes out at a really good time when the county's office are debating their budget. So it's really good timing, especially if there are plans to take a peek at all those line items at the county's office. And yeah, just to be in sync with the workflow. And so, you know, in the state of Hawaii, the DOH, the wastewater branch oversees and permits onsite wastewater systems. But then it's the county's office, the Department of Environmental Services, which connects the sewer lines and does the hard work of connecting the pipes and everything else. So it's really good to have good timing on things, so in strong support.
Thank you very much. Anybody else wishing to testify on HB 879? Members, any questions?
Sure.
Okay, Senator Richards.
Conservancy, Nature Conservancy, Kim. You piqued my interest when you said you're actually collecting the data. Can you share that data with us?
I can, absolutely.
If you get it to the chairs, they'll share it with the committees. Thank you.
Sure, thank you.
Any other questions on HB 879? Okay, I do. Department of Health, come on up. So we were not hearing the other bill because it wasn't part of the Department of Health's priorities regarding number of full-time employees. This one regarding your testimony, it doesn't say how much the grant is. It remains blank. How much grants are you folks? It used to be 20,000. That was removed. And there's no testimony as to the maximum amount of grant. Is it still going to be 20,000?
I didn't draft this, but if you're asking me, I think it's safe to just continue that because it's going to cause, they initially tried to increase it, I think, and might cause a little confusion to people or make people upset.
Well, nobody has testified as to the maximum amount of grant, so it remains blank. So can we put down that the Department of Health is suggesting a continuation of 20,000?
Yes.
Thank you. Second thing, there remains a blank amount here also for the revenues for the, I guess, the three FTEs you want. How much? Or will you be able to provide that for WHAM?
I can provide that. I can provide it to you guys immediately after this, and I can provide it to WHAM.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, seeing none, moving on. Next up, HB 918 relating to labeling. First up, we have, I think, Department of Health providing comments.
Good afternoon, Chairs, Vice Chairs. Matt Carano, Department of Health, Environmental Health Services Division. We stand on our written comments. I just want to highlight, though, this one is that, as kind of said in other testimonies, the labeling of non-flushable for wipes is not a national requirement. So if it's going to be a statewide requirement, it requires states to have levels of effort to be able to enforce it through outreach. We're not opposed to anything that shouldn't be going down the drain that causes sewer spills, but we would be requesting, like in our testimony, a couple positions in order to implement this. Thank you very much. Available for questions?
Thank you very much. Next, we have Craig Kawaguchi, County Hawaii Department of Environmental Management in support. Tina Yamaki, Retail Merchants of Hawaii in opposition. Tina, are you present on Zoom?
Not present on Zoom, Chair.
Okay, Lindsay Garcia, Hawaii Realtors in support.
Thank you, Senator.
Okay, thank you. Household and Commercial Products Association providing comments, Christopher Finarelli. Next, Association of Non-Woven Fabrics Industry, Wes Fisher in support. Wes Fisher, are you present? Please proceed.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Good afternoon, Senators. Wes Fisher, I'm the Director of Government Affairs for INDO, the Association of the Non-Woven Fabrics Industry. Will stand on our written testimony. Just want to say, we represent wipes manufacturers and the wipes industry. We're supportive of this legislation. This represents collaboration between the wastewater industry and wipes manufacturers. This legislation, or legislation very similar to it, has passed in seven states to date. We did have one small recommendation around the deadline to apply the label for FIFRA wipes, so disinfecting wipes. Other than that, happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Next, we have Ted Bowlen, Hawaii Reef and Ocean Coalition in support.
Stand on a written testimony.
Thank you. Mel De Adua, Environmental Caucus of Democratic Party of Hawaii in support. Robin Knox in support. Michael Becker in support. Stuart Coleman in support.
I stand on the written testimony and just echo what the gentleman said. This is a rare occasion when you have the industry and regulators in your.
Thank you very much. Anybody else wishing to testify on HB 918? Members, any questions?
I got one.
Okay, Senator Richards, please proceed.
I guess it's going to be for environmental management, Department of Environmental Management.
Good afternoon, Senator.
Good afternoon. Thanks for coming up. I get that this is a good idea, but to your point about how do we enforce it, since it's a state, not a national, and at what cost? And I don't even know how to enforce what's going in the sewer. I mean, so, though I think it's a great idea, and I agree, it's industry and the public coming together, I'm not sure if funding positions is going to be beneficial to the state. The idea is great, but I don't see how this is going to work. Any comment?
Yeah, thank you, Matt Carano, Department of Health, Environmental Services. That's exactly the concern we have. I think, once it becomes nationalized, you know, I think that'll kind of somewhat take care of itself. It's a great idea. It's wonderful when the wastewater industry and the, you know, the product producer agree. I think, in principle, we really do agree with it. We have serious concerns over different versions of the drafts, too, about enforcement, particularly when ultimately it comes back to the manufacturer to be adding labels, and then what leverage abilities do we have? You know, we don't want to be removing products that people need from shelves locally. We also think that the majority is at county-level issues, since they run the county wastewater treatment plants. Now, public outreach and campaigns, like No Food Oil Down the Drain, it's similar in that it causes, in fact, they clog together, right? Fat birds. So a public outreach is really important, and I think when the time comes, hopefully, that there's a national bill passed, I think it'll take care of the resource issue about making this happen. So one of the asks were, if this were to go forward, then we would want positions to help with the outreach and coordination of all the counties, as well as the individual wastewater systems, because those are ultimately pumped, right? And taken to the regional wastewater treatment plant. So that's, those are the difficulties we foresee as well.
Thank you, thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. Any other questions?
Sure.
Okay. Okay, Senator Keho Kaloli first.
Thank you. For the lobbyist on Zoom, Non-Woven Fabrics Industry.
Okay, Mr. Wes Fisher?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, you have a question?
Thank you for your testimony. Why don't you guys just put the label on your products now?
So this legislation has passed in seven states, so effectively, every covered product within this definition that's in this bill, or all seven states, you should see full compliance. Any product that's currently labeled flushable would not fall under this definition. It does not contain plastic, and it meets a standard to prove that it does what it says it's going to do. I linked to a few sources in my testimony.
I guess your association is made up of members who produce flushable products?
Our members produce both types of wipes. Of the wipes industry, probably 85% to 90% of products, of wipes products, are non-flushable, so things like baby wipes, disinfecting wipes.
So I guess, again, why don't you just put the label on now?
I would just reiterate, the label is, for the most part, already on. Any, I would be surprised if any covered product on shelves anywhere in the U.S. does not have that label applied, as California was the first state to pass this back in 2021.
So why do we need the bill?
Well, it would give you the opportunity to enforce the legislation. And it also provides that not just have a label, but there is a provision that any wipe that is a covered product, so a wipe that is either marketed as a baby or diapering wipe, or a wipe that is made with plastic-based fibers, cannot legally be referred to marketed as a flushable wipe, so that would give your state that enforcement power. I will add, I think the gentleman from the Department of Health stated that, mentioned a national effort. We have been working hard with our friends in the wastewater industry on a national bill called the Wipes Act, the Wastewater Infrastructure Pollution Prevention and Environmental Safety Act. We love our acronyms here in D.C. And that measure did pass the U.S. House with wide bipartisan support last year. We failed to get it through committee in time, but we're planning to reintroduce that next week. So I'd additionally encourage anyone from Hawaii who's watching to urge their members of Congress to co-sponsor that piece of legislation.
All right, thank you.
Okay, Senator Hovella, do you have any questions? Department of Health.
Good afternoon, Senator.
Yeah, my question is similar to Senator Richards, but again, the enforcement, and then even like these flushables, who's going to regulate them? I'm going to let you know, most of the flushables that I know in my community, Steve's Plumbing have a lot of work because it plugs up the plumbing really bad. When I went out there to investigate that, they said, I thought it was regular baby wipes? They said, no, sir, it's the flushables. And the flushables are plugging up the system. So how, again, we're going to regulate that? I mean, who's going to be able to come out to a property, I guess, and say, hey, and Steve Plumbing will give you a bill and say, hey, this was caused by, who's going to enforce it? That's the part that I concern about.
That's what they need the money for?
Oh, you need the money for that?
Well, so.
When I apply for that job, then I want to be a police.
Senator Matt Carano, Department of Health, Department of Health Services. We don't really want to be the come-to-your-house enforcement officer asking, what happened to your baby wipe? But that is a legitimate question, and I do think, in many respects, people will put things down the drain that they think they can't put down the drain. And some things say flushable, but they really still probably shouldn't go down the drain. And so, a big part is really education. All of your community should have seen, like, food, oil, and grease, right? Like, and I think, but those are largely county efforts under existing kind of regulatory frameworks. So we don't like to kick the can, especially when legislature believes that, you know, this is something we should be mandated to do, so we'd be willing. But we'd, like I said, you know, there are serious concerns about it, because it's more of an awareness issue than it's like a perfect product that immediately dissolves, or it's just like compostable equipment. So that takes a level of effort. It generally impacts at the, generally at the county level, but you're right. Individual homeowners plugging plugs and, you know, condo associations, we're aware of all of that, too. But we would not like to be the come-to-your-house regulator and be checking for your wipes. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
Any other questions? Seeing none. Okay, moving on. Next up, it is relating to avian influenza, HB 1427. First up, we have Disease Outbreak Control Division, Department of Health in support.
Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the committee, can the Department of Health stand by our written testimony and support? And are there any questions?
Thank you very much. Department of Agriculture in support.
I stand in the Department of Agriculture. We stand on our written testimony in support.
Thank you very much. Jack Lewin, State Shipta in support.
Yes, Chair, and members, we stand on our written testimony in support.
Thank you very much. Okay, DLNR in support.
Actually, DLNR in support.
Thank you very much. Andrew Crossland, Hawaii Patriot Republicans in opposition. Margaret Major, Hawaii Christian Coalition in opposition. Come on up.
Aloha. My name is Margaret Mejia. I'm here on behalf of Hawaii Christian Coalition. We have, I'm representing about 130,000 people today on all islands. Although this bill is, we strongly oppose HB 1427 for the following reasons. Although this bill doesn't mention vaccines, we can follow the money to discover that the end of passing this bill may result in our taxpayer dollars going towards avian bird flu vaccines, since most people, since some people believe that vaccines are a preventative measure or a response to avian influenza. The five companies that are currently developing avian flu vaccines all contain mRNA in their vaccines. And Dr. Robert Malone, who's a biochemist and biologist who created the mRNA technology, said that that changes people's DNA. Let's see. Some of the people that are in Hawaii Christian Coalition do not support vaccines at all. Others who do support vaccines personally also support people's choice to vaccinate or not. And to wrap up, although the DOH website says the bird flu in Hawaii remains low risk, and there's also a policy where they, if one bird out of 1,000 or million, however many they have, has bird flu, they kill all of them, and it's through a horrific practice called foam depopulation.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Lauren Zerbal, Hawaii Food Industry Association in support. Lauren Zerbal, are you present on Zoom?
Not present on Zoom, Chair.
Brian Miyamoto, Hawaii Farm Bureau in support. Jill Yoshisato, Doctor of Hawaii Veterinary Medical Association in support. Nicole Galassi, Hawaii Calumns Council in support. Nicole, are you present on Zoom? Please, Nicole, are you?
Yes, sir.
Please proceed.
Thank you, Chair, Vice Chairs, members of the committees. Nicole Galassi, on behalf of the Hawaii Calumns Council, we stand on our testimony in support. Mahalo.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Cheryl Toyoifuku in opposition. Cheryl, come on up.
Aloha, Senators. My name is Cheryl Toyoifuku. My mom, my grandmother, I'm a retired registered nurse. 30 years ago, I did transition to more natural, non-toxic healthcare. I'm in strong opposition to this bill because it still has a blank appropriation amount, although the Health Committee, when it went through that, it was $3,300,000 to $4,700,000. This was also verified by Chair Greg Takayama in the Health and Chair Kristin Kahaloa. And many do not agree with the Department of Health's response to viruses, including influenza. So funds are being questioned, we are appropriated, and some agriculture disease spreading practices, toxic load in chickens and other migratory birds, along with disturbing poultry, culling policy, should be revisited instead. Whether it's the avian flu, the swine flu, the monkeypox, the measles trumpeted by government, state departments, some industrial complexes and media, these hyped and alarming fears are, okay, are perpetuated in the dissemination of public health information. And, you know, it's just a collaboration, and many of these do profit greatly. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Brett Colbus in opposition. Brett Colbus, are you present on Zoom? Please proceed.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Chair. Standby of Chair, Chair Gabbard and committee members. My name is Brett Colbus. I'm a 26-year Navy veteran. I live in Anava Beach. I oppose HB 1427. While the uncertainty turned about avian flu and avian influenza, this bill is premature and potentially wasteful taxpayer dollars. As of January 2025, only one case of H5N1 has been confirmed in Hawaii. Subsequent monitoring, including water testing, on other islands, has suggested the possible presence of the virus, but has not resulted in additional confirmed cases of birds, humans, or other animals in Hawaii. Current risk to the public is considered low, with no human-to-human transmission reported. Instead of broad appropriation, we should focus on targeted measures, enhance existing biosecurity protocols in farms and ports, educate the public in prevention and reporting, strengthen our current surveillance system. These steps can be accomplished within existing departmental budgets.
Mr. Colbus, we need you to wrap up.
Yes, ma'am. The proposed appropriation lacks specificity on how funds will be used and could divert resources for more pressing health and agricultural needs. I urge you to commit your vote.
Thank you very much.
I will against 1427.
Next, we have Terry Angster in opposition. Terry, come on up.
Hi, I'm Terry, and I oppose HB 1427 because the Department of Health is asking for millions of dollars without even presenting a viable plan to monitor, prevent, and respond to a possible bird flu outbreak. And the current practice right now on the mainland is if one bird or one chicken gets sick, they kill the whole flock, and then they pay the farmer, and then repeat the process over and over. So this is not an effective way, and it's been shown that it does not stop the spread. And now you're just decreasing our food supply and increasing the egg prices. And also, they are proposing some vaccines, but these are experimental right now. And since, like any flu virus, they, the gene, the virus can mutate, and so no amount of vaccines can keep up with the different strains. So that is not going to stop the spread or possible outbreaks either. And also, I want to say that natural immunity, focus on natural immunity, not mass killing, mass vaccination, but natural immunity and more healthy practices to protect our chickens and protect our food supply.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Mary Healy, also in opposition. Mary, are you present on Zoom?
Not present on Zoom, Chair.
Okay, next, we have Douglas Perrin in support. And now we also have 47 people all in opposition, three people in support. Anybody else wishing to testify on HB 1427? Angela, you have one minute.
Angela Melody Young testifying neutral in just a brief comment. So at the Hawaii State Capitol, we hear a lot about like scary things instead of solutions focused on positive pathways. So I'm not sure if it's necessary to fund a bird flu mitigation plan, but for us, my mom has a chick sanctuary at home, and I get eggs fresh, like, every single day. So if there could be a plan for people to learn to manage a chick sanctuary and then to produce eggs, and to kind of create awareness about natural pathways for, like, just creating a sustainable food supply and generating funds for middle-class families with helping with economic development of an egg industry.
Thank you very much, Angela.
It could be more helpful.
Anybody else wishing to testify on HB 1427? Members, any questions?
Chair.
Okay, Senator Richards.
Department of Ag, Dr. Manna.
Isaac Mera, Department of Agriculture.
Yeah, Dr. Manna, can you just touch on, there's been some references to depopulation for managing disease outbreaks? Can you touch on that and the protocol that we use nationally to address them?
Yeah, USDA's protocol is to, as they call it, stamp out, which is to try and drastically reduce the load of virus. Because what happens is when you get infected flock, is you get tremendous amounts of virus. Now, when a flock of chickens gets infected with this virus, in general, situation is that the entire flock is going to die. So the depopulation or euthanasia of the flock is actually, in a sense, preemptive, because otherwise, it's just going to, they're going to, most of them are going to die anyway, pretty rapidly, usually less than 24 hours. It's pretty nasty stuff to have to deal with in a laying facility. So from that standpoint, that's the. So from that standpoint, that's the reason why USDA initially, they had actually talked about walking back from doing that, trying to see if there were other options. But I think recently, the Secretary of Agriculture came on and said vaccines isn't really an option for them, and they're still gonna have to do the control of disease by eliminating.
And we had that one case on, actually, on this island. The sequel to that, the post on that one is, have we had any further outbreaks?
Not that we've been able to document. There hasn't been any reports, and all the birds that we've tested subsequently that have died, including, you know, furrowed chickens that got turned in and what have you, were all negative.
Okay, thank you. Chair, follow up? Thanks, Isaac Maeda.
Okay, who else do you want to talk?
Department of Health.
Department of Health.
Hi, Senator.
Hi. Identify yourself.
Hi, my name is Nathan Tan. I'm the Deputy Chief in the Disease Outbreak Control Division.
Okay, thank you. Just, can you touch on the zoonotic concerns with the high path avian influenza and co-monitoring between Department of Health and Department of Ag?
I think the specific zoonotic concern is that it's an infection in the animal population in which there is an interface with the human population. Certainly, people are around birds and animals, and it continues to spread. The risk right now, I think, is really for those that work around birds and, as well as dairy herds as well. And our concern on the human side is that the more the virus is spreading, the more chance for it to evolve and for that transmission to increase and to spread within the human populations. That's our biggest concern. I did want to just add one clarifying point. The requests for funds do not have any request for vaccination. This is really to enhance our current response and to be able to have some funds in case there was an outbreak in a setting such as a poultry operation, which would require a lot of resource to respond.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for the clarification. Any other questions on HB 1427?
Chair, follow up with DOH, please.
Okay, Senator Decoy, you need to come back, DOH.
So your testimony stated that you needed between 3.3 million to 4.7 million to prevent, monitor, respond to avian influenza in Hawaii. How are you able to respond to the threat now?
Well, we do have resources that are in place that we use to respond to the various threats that we face in terms of the infectious disease threats for Hawaii. That being said, you know, this is a new threat, and the ability for it to evolve and oppose a significant threat, such as what we've seen in COVID, is certainly there. I think the best, I think our history has taught us that getting resources in place, particularly funds available, to be able to respond is important.
Okay. So how much did it cost you to respond to that one threat and the partnership you had with Department of Ag?
Not able to provide those, that information for now, but I could certainly try to provide and get that information in terms of the resources that were needed.
That would be super helpful for us.
But certainly, it was a cross, you know, certainly, multiple departments were involved across the state government, as well as the federal government too as well.
So I think it would be super helpful for us to understand what resources you used and how you prevented it and how you're going to continue to prevent this going forward. So based on that, how much, how much more do you think you need to do if you're at that level?
I can give you kind of a high-level overview of some of the resources that are involved. So when we have a detection, so some of this is like at the state lab, monitoring the wastewater. So that initial detection occurred in a wastewater, but it involved communication with our Department of Ag colleagues, who had a report of sick and dead birds across a variety of different bird species in that catchment area. So it required investigators to go out in the Department of Health side to understand who might have been exposed to the sick or dead birds.
So I get that part. So I understand. How much did it cost you guys?
Sure.
For manpower, for gover, that one area you guys contained, those birds, basically, you guys just killed the rest of them off anyway. How much did it cost?
Yeah, I can't provide that right now, but I can certainly try to get some costs.
If you can, that'd be helpful. Give them to the chair. Thank you.
And when you do that, because you're talking about multiple bird species, include potential catchment problems for those of us who live in catchment areas and are prone to bird species going into our catchments. Okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Yeah, I have another question for you while you're here. So at this point, there has or has not been transmission from, of avian flu to humans, not in Hawaii, just anywhere?
So to date, in the United States, there's been 70 human cases of avian influenza.
What's the survival rate for those?
Of the 70 cases, there's been one reported death in the United States. That being said, so I would say that avian influenza, we most recently are seeing it in dairy herds, and the infections that we see in humans that are around in dairy herds have been mild. That being said, historically, infections for those that have gotten in humans has had a high mortality rate. And so I think that's one of the big concerns.
Well, 1 in 70 is a pretty, pretty, pretty good mortality rate, but.
Certainly, in the cases we've seen, but even historically, mortality rates as high as 50%.
Okay, so members, we have one more on this joint, and then I have two other joints.
I have one other question. So there is no vaccine, there is no human vaccine nor animal vaccine at this point?
Significant work is certainly being done to make sure that a vaccine would be available if we were to see what, you know, human transmission on a sustained basis.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you very much. Okay, moving on. HB 750, relating to environment. First up, Department of Health, it's support on Zoom. Please proceed.
Hello, Lino Tzu, speaking for, hello, Lino Tzu, speaking for Department of Health. We stand on our written testimony in support of this bill.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Lea Larame, Climate Change Mitigation and Adaptation Commission, in support. County Clerk, Council Services Division, in support. Hawaii Food Industry Association, Lauren Zerbal, providing comments on Zoom. Lauren, are you present on Zoom?
Good afternoon, Chairs, Vice Chairs, members of the committees. I'm Alexis Chapman for HFIA. We have comments, and I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. John Richard, Flexible Packaging Association, providing comment, Climate Change and Health Working Group, in support. Tina Yamaki, Retail Merchants of Hawaii, providing comments. Tina, are you present on Zoom?
Not present on Zoom, Chair.
Thank you. Ted Bowles, Hawaii Reef and Ocean Coalition, in support.
Thank you, Chairs, Vice Chair, members of the committee, Ted Bowles, Hawaii Reef and Ocean Coalition. With our landfill constraints in every county, we need to do what we can to reduce the amount of waste that's going into the landfill and preserve the space that we have. We need to refill and reuse things more and not just toss after we use things. I've worked for several years now with others, including people from the industry, to come up with first steps that could move us toward a more circular waste system. This is a good bill that moves in that direction. I urge the committees to pass it, and I'm available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, Mihoko Ito, Consumer Technology Association, providing comments. Thank you very much. Victor Lim, Hawaii Restaurant Association, providing comments. Victor, are you present?
Good afternoon, Senators. Just two comments. We're always concerned about moving money from one intent to another program. The second point is that on the Advisory Council, the representation on the business community side is missing. We have three, four groups lumped into for only one seat. So please consider providing more representation from the business community. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Next, we have Melody Aduha, Environmental Caucus of Democratic Party of Hawaii, in support. I'm Holly Kessler, Hawaii Public Health Associate, in support. Ruda Jordan, Zero Waste Kauai, in support. Sheri Menor, Chamber of Commerce of Hawaii, in support. Edwin Borben of Ameripen, providing comments. Ruda Jordan's providing in support. Andrew Evans in support. Ellie Warren in support. Emily Werner in support. Noel Moran in support. Nancy Romain in support. Elizabeth Kiefer in support. Anybody else wishing to testify on HB 750? Come on up. You have one minute.
Angela Melody Young, cares, in strong support. So in this bill, we're talking about the EPR, Extended Producer's Responsibility, and this has been something debated and legislated on the mainland in a few jurisdictions, I think. I think I may also be oversimplifying some of these things, but it was implemented somewhere on the mainland. So, and the Kiki Caucus, which is one of the longest standing caucuses created by Senator Suzy Chan Oakland and former Representative Arakaki, the children and youth, they really care about environment and recycling. So in the group, there are a lot of community advocates where we go to community service events and students get trained and to provide for the community-based infrastructure for recycling and sustainability and to raise awareness about environmentally-friendly practices. So I think if there can be more things to be done outside of the rules.
Okay, thank you very much.
It can be really helpful for recycling. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, anybody else wishing to testify on HB 750? Members, any questions? Seeing none, can we proceed on to decision-making? Okay, thank you very much. So for HB 256, HD2, Chair's recommendation is to pass this, as is note that there is already, oh, a different defective date of December 31, 2050. So pass with amendments. Any comments, questions, concerns? Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote.
Okay, voting on House Bill 256, House Draft 2, recommendation of the Chair's to pass with amendments. Chair and Vice Chair vote aye. Senator Hashimoto?
Aye.
Senator Kailo Kauli?
Aye.
Senator Favella?
Aye.
Recommendation is adopted, Chair.
Same recommendation for AEN. Any discretion? Chair votes aye. Vice Chair?
On HB 256, passing with amendments. Chair votes aye. Vice Chair votes aye. Senator Decoy?
Aye.
Senator Rhodes?
Aye.
Senator Awat?
No.
Chair, you have four in favor. Motion adopted.
Thank you very much. So for HB 734, HD1, Chair's recommendation is to pass this with a different defective date of December 31, 2050. We're gonna, we are going to note on the committee report, a request of Department of Health of 150,000 for each fiscal year to hire consultants. Any comments, questions, concerns? Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote.
Okay, all members are present. Any reservations? Any no's? Recommendation is adopted, Chair.
Same recommendation for AEN. Chair votes aye. Vice Chair?
Passing with amendments, HB 734. Chair, I'm a vote with reservations because I'm concerned on the financing. So Chair votes aye. Vice Chair votes with reservations. Senator Decoy?
Aye.
Senator Rhodes?
Aye.
Senator Awat?
Aye.
Chair, you have five in favor.
Thank you, members.
Okay, so for HB 735, HD2, Chair's recommendation is to pass this with technical amendments and a different defective date of December 31, 2050. So pass with amendments. Any comments, questions, concerns? Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote.
Okay, all members are present. Any reservations? Any no's? Recommendation is adopted.
Reservations.
Reservations for Senator Kailo Kauli. Okay. Any other reservations? Any other no's? Recommendation is adopted, Chair.
Same recommendation for AEN. Chair votes aye. Vice Chair?
On HB 735, Chair votes aye with all members present. Are there any reservations or no votes?
Senator Awat?
No, no, no. I was just trying to make justice.
Oh, sorry.
Thanks.
Okay, thanks. Sorry.
So everybody is aye?
Aye.
Okay, Chair, you have five in favor.
Thank you, man.
Thank you very much. So for HB 879, HD1, Chair's recommendation is to pass this with amendments. We're going to note Department of Health's oral testimony regarding the blank appropriation for, so we're going to add in a blank appropriation paragraph and note in the committee report their request for three full-time employees and that, and a different defective date of December 31, 2050. Any comments, questions, concerns? To pass with amendments? Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote. So we're gonna, we're just gonna.
Do I discuss on our side or?
We can just discuss about your discussion.
Look, we're gonna go along this one only because there's an alternative that's not being talked about that costs way less. It's organic, it's basically using the Aoi, Genki Ball in set schools, and it's only at $500 a year, a much less, and it could be better for the environment. So if you want to push your money towards something like that, probably rather than this.
Okay, thank you very much. And I just also want to add in the committee report, Department of Health's oral testimony is to continue the maximum grant of $20,000 per application. Any other comments, questions, concerns?
Yep. Chair, I'm going to be voting with reservations because I'm concerned about financing.
Sounds good.
Chair, seeing, you know, I got concerns about this bill because even on the amount it put there, it's how they're going to prioritize who gets to first dibs on those funds. I largely agree with everything Senator Awat said, but the Genki Ball is the, just saying.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so pass with amendments. Vice Chair for the vote.
Okay, all members are present. Any reservations? Any no's?
No vote.
Okay, no vote for Senator Favella. Recommendation is adopted, Chair.
Same recommendation for AEN. Chair votes aye.
HB 879, Chair votes aye. Vice Chair votes with reservations. Senator Decoy?
Reservations.
Senator Rhodes?
Aye.
Senator Awat?
No.
Chair, you have four in favor.
Thank you, members.
Thank you. For HB 734, HD1, Chair's recommendation is to pass this with a different defective date of December 31, 2050. Excuse me, I'm sorry. Am I missing one?
918.
Sorry. Where am I? 918, excuse me. For HB 918, HD2, Chair's recommendation is to pass this with technical amendments. We're also going to amend the six-month delay to 18 months. We're also going to put in a blank appropriation amount for Department of Health's proposed enforcement, and we're going to put in the committee report their proposed request of $100,000 and two full-time positions, and the 100,000 is to do the outreach and education, and a different defective date of December 31, 2050. This is a conversation that needs to occur, and the question is whether or not we pay for it now or pay for it later. So pass with amendments. Any comments, questions, concerns?
Comment, Chair. I'm going to be voting with reservation because of the financing side.
Yep, thank you. Any other comments, questions, concerns? Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote.
Okay, all members are present. Any reservations? Reservations for Senator Favella? Any other reservations? Any no's? Recommendation is adopted, Chair.
Same recommendation for AEN. Chair votes aye.
On HB 918, with all members present, any reservations? Any no votes?
No.
Chair, you have four in favor. Motion's adopted.
Okay, thank you very much. For HB 1427, HD1, Chair's recommendation is to pass this with a different defective date of December 31, 2050, to continue the conversation. We're going to note in the committee report, Department of Agriculture's request of 293,000, and Department of Health's request of 3.3 million to 4.7 million, which they are going to have to justify with WAM, but that's not for our committee to decide at this time. And other than that, any comments, questions, or concerns? Seeing none, Vice Chair?
Concerns? Concerns, sure. Sure. Just a fact that based on the avian influenza, it's been a highlight of importance. We get a press release extending out a voluntary pause on inter-island transport of birds. I would think that at that point, if it's that important, then it's a mandatory shutdown of inter-island transport of birds.
Okay, thank you. Noted. Any other comments, questions, or concerns? Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote. Pass with amendments.
Okay, all members are present. Any reservations? Any reservations?
Reservation.
Reservation for Senator Favella? Any other reservations? Any no's? Recommendation is adopted, Chair.
Same recommendation for AEN.
HB 1427, passing with amendments. All members are present. Any no votes? Any reservations?
Reservations.
Okay, Chair, you have four in favor.
Thank you very much. So, HB 750, Chair's recommendation is to pass this with substantial amendments. We are gonna accept Department of Health's proposed amendments, HFIAs' proposed amendments on part, and we are also gonna add a part two where we are going to insert in SB 1498, SB 1298, that we had previously passed and technical amendments needed for clarity and consistency. Any comments, questions, concerns? Yes.
Chair, is one of those amendments to add on the seat for the business?
Right.
Thank you.
That's HFIAs' proposed.
Thank you.
Okay, any other comments, questions, concerns? Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote. Pass with amendments.
Okay, all members are present. Any reservations? Any no's? Recommendation is adopted, Chair.
Same recommendation for AEN.
HB 750, passing with amendments. All members present. Any reservations? Any no votes? Chair, you have five in favor. The motion is adopted.
Okay, thank you very much. And we are adjourned for HHS. Thank you. Calling the Calendar for Health, Human Services and Housing Joint Committee 105 Calendar. First up, HB 431 relating to housing. We have Louis Olivera, Department of Budget and Finance, providing comments. Next, we have Hawaii Housing Finance and Development Corporation in support, HHS. Thank you very much. Next, we have Dinkley Bartolodis, Hawaii State Council on Developmental Disabilities in support. Okay, and I'm just gonna note for the record that we have, we have Chair Chang coming in and we had called it in at a time when Vice Chair Hashimoto was present so that we could be more efficient. But I know Chair Chang is listening in. So, and we also have Senator, yeah, he's present. And we also have Senator Kail Colole, Senator Favella present. So, next up, we have Hawaii State Council on Developmental Disabilities in support. Director Yamane, Department of Human Services in support. Are you present, Director?
I'm here, but. Sunny Gannon, repeat this one.
In support.
In support.
Thank you. Jun Yang, State Office on Homelessness and Housing Solutions in support.
I think you're. Jun Yang with the Office of Homelessness and Housing Solutions. Actually, just wanted to clarify, we're here, wanted to present some comments. We just wanted to make sure that the committee knows we're asking for just a little bit of a reconsideration on the amendments to, the amendment requiring at least two bids for the Kahawali project over $1 million.
We saw that.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, next, we have Lynn Anna Lee, Office of Foreign Affairs in support. Bonnie Kahaku, State Procurement Office, providing comments. Shanoa Quinan, Hawaii State Youth Commission in support. Karen Tashima, on behalf of Kehalani Costa, County of Hawaii Office of Housing and Community Development in support. Kevin Auger, Office of Housing, City and County of Honolulu in support. Betty Lou Larson in support.
Chairs, Vice Chairs and Members, I'm Betty Lou Larson with Catholic Church of Hawaii. We feel both the Kahawali and the purpose of housing are really essential to end homelessness and especially to prevent homelessness. I just want to comment that as a member of the Coalition that's been joining us, we've been very impressed with HHSDC's really dedication and attention to helping us to find a structured solution to this and that would be streamlined, that would involve the collaboration with the counties. So, just want to encourage that to continue and we support this bill. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Hawaii Health and Harm Reduction Center in support, Nikos Leverens. Are you present on Zoom? Please proceed. You have one minute.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, Members. Nikos Leverens with Hawaii Health and Harm Reduction Center in strong support of this bill. I'll just, I'll just stand on our testimony because I know you're in a crunch. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Alan Johnson, HSAK in support. Maui Chamber of Commerce in support. Sandra O'Sher of H Y A I T in support. Hawaii Community Foundation, Micah Kane in support. Audrey Awaya, Pacific Housing Assistance Corporation in support. Susan Lee, Hawaii Apple Seed Center for Law and Economic Justice in support. Heather Lusk, Hawaii Health and Harm Reduction in support. Rachel Lewis, Easter Seals in support. Jennifer Tsit, Young Democrats of Hawaii in support. Ronson Silva, Democratic Party of Hawaii in support. Angie Knight, Institute of Hawaii Service, Human Services in support. Yes? Okay, Ellen Awai in support. David Ball in support. Brezza Xiaoyanguya in support. Anybody else wishing to testify on HB 431? Okay, you have one minute, Angela.
Angela Melody Young, testifying in strong support. And so, I think this is really helpful to getting to goals in the state. And so, one of the developers was HomeAid. HomeAid was very efficient at designing the Kahawali. And right now, to kind of maximize resources, to consider perhaps joint venture partnerships of companies coming together to share resources. When groups come together, they can expand their resources to get to their goals in a more efficient amount of time. So, to build faster, to build more efficiently and to be effective with the work groups, I think this initiative is gonna be very helpful and a great deal of fun.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody else wishing to testify on HB 431? Members, any questions? So, I do one. HHSDC, I have a question. So, this bill has a special fund regarding supportive housing. Do you need a special fund or can we just give you a general appropriation to do the supportive housing?
I believe a special fund would be.
Is it necessary or can we just give you a grant? I mean, can we just appropriate you money and tell you use it for supportive housing using this criteria?
It potentially could.
Okay.
But the funds may lapse, right?
Yeah.
In six years, so we would like to provide services on ongoing long-term basis, which is the basis for having a special fund.
Yeah.
Because.
But we have, okay. Budget and Finance has questions on, on the special fund appropriation unless we keep funding it. So, okay, I think it's gonna have the same problems if we're just gonna do a general appropriation, whether or not we label it a special fund.
I see. We'll take a look at the testimony and see if we can address their concern.
Okay, thank you very much. Any, okay.
Senator Favella?
I'm the new one.
My name is Jun Yang, yes.
Okay, sorry. Anyway, my concern is, you know, I reached out previously before. The question would be, what is the, what is the, not only with the state, we're just doing with the state right now. HHSDC, we're coming up with this idea. What is the actual plan in working with IHS and all of these guys who getting a lot of money, you know, don't even have to come for a grant? $30 million, bam, giving up. But you've been here, I've been here. Do you see any solutions besides now we're making Kahawali, trying to make ourselves, we can have more accessibility for our houses population? But did we see the decrease? Well, we did not. So, my question is, well, I want the governor and I'll reach out to him too, I'll reach out to, saying this publicly. Somebody need to look into something that is broken. I think something is broken there because we're working hard here legislatively to find alternative and getting funding for Kahawali homes, which I think is a great idea. I was a big supporter of that from day one when he was LG. But we gotta find out what is the mechanism that is causing the increase and not the decrease. We need to look into IHS and figure out how is this not decreasing? And their income and the money going to them is increasing, but there's no decrease. There's no checks and balances.
I understand.
So, I don't want to work with you if we can't look into that going forward.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. So, that's one of our questions going forward is the plan. But I don't think it's this.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
No, 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 it's not. It's a legitimate question.
It is.
Okay, so it's a legitimate concern. Any other questions on HB 431? But Senator Favella is basically echoing all of our concerns.
Absolutely, we understand.
Thank you very much.
We'll be bringing some information. Thank you very much.
Not necessarily about the 30 million to IHS, but at least the overall homelessness plan, okay?
Yes, Chair, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, any other questions on HB 431? Okay, moving on, HB 703. First up, relating to Kapuna Housing. First up, we have, excuse me, what the heck do we have? Oh, I'm sorry, that's why I don't have it. It's you.
No problem. Our first testifier is State Health Planning and Development Agency in support.
Yes, 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 we stand on our testimony in support. Thank you.
Thank you, Executive Office on Aging in Support.
Hi, Chair Chang and Senator Sam, one of the interim members of the committee. We stand on our written testimony in support. Thank you.
Thank you, Hawaii Public Housing Authority in support. Thank you, Office of Hawaiian Affairs in support. County of Hawaii Office of Housing and Community Development in support. Institute for Human Services in support. Policy Advisory Board, Elderly Affairs in support. Democratic Party of Hawaii in support. Catholic Charities Hawaii in support.
Catholic Church of Samoan written testimony in support.
Thank you, and several individuals in support. Mike Galloyu Senior, Le Momi Khan, Ellen Awai, Deanna Espinas. And that's it. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on HB 703?
Angela Melody Young, testifying on behalf of CARES, in strong support of the Kapuna Housing. Because I love seniors, I go to the Senior Daycare Senior Center all the time. I sing to them and we relax and we have fun. Some of the seniors have health concerns that get triggered very easily. So, I try to do my best to just provide care to them and to accommodate the housing needs of the qualified and eligible seniors. I think this legislation is very necessary. In the plan to kind of expand the benefits for senior housing, this can help. Yeah. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to testify on HB 703? If not, are there, are there any questions? If not, I think we're.
Ready for decision making? Okay, are we ready for decision making? So, for HHS HOU, HB 431, Chair's recommendation is to pass this with substantial amendments. We're going to add a purpose on part two, page four, to sub one, to appropriate funds for the continued implementation of the Ohana Zones program established under Act 09, Session Law 2018. We're gonna remove page five, line 20 through page six, line 18, and add part two, a paragraph that says there is appropriated out of the general revenues of the State of Hawaii, a blank amount for the continued operation of the Ohana Zones Pilot Program established under Act 09, Session 2018. On page seven, remove lines 16 through 18. Amend references to special fund on page 11 to be administered by HHSDC and basically substitute on line seven and eight to read as follows, year 2026 to 2027. Blank amounts to be administered by HHSDC for supportive housing. Remove section six, lines nine to 13 and 19 to 21 on page 11. And on page 12, remove lines one to five. On the committee report, we're gonna note HHSDC's request for $175,000 to implement and one full-time employee. And we are going to request that Jun Yang provide to the WHAM committee the blank amounts necessary for the supportive housing blank, for the Ohana Zones blank and for the Kahawali Zones blank. Okay? Any other comments, questions and concerns? Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote. Pass with amendments.
Okay, voting on House Bill 431, House Draft 2, recommendation of the Chair to pass with amendments. Chair and Vice Chair vote aye. Senator Hashimoto?
Aye.
Senator Kail Colole?
Aye.
Chair Favella?
Aye.
Recommendation is adopted, Chair.
And for this Committee on Housing, for HB 431, the same recommendation to pass with amendments. Chair votes aye.
Chair recommendation on HB 431 is to pass with amendments. Chair votes aye. Vice Chair votes aye. Senator Kino?
Aye.
Senator Kanuha?
Aye.
Senator Favella?
Aye.
Chair recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. For HB 703, Jurists having conferred, recommendation will be to pass with amendments. It will be technical, non-substantive amendments for the purposes of clarity and consistency and will also further defect the date. Okay, if not, for HB 703, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Chair votes aye.
Members, HB 703, HB 1, Chair's recommendation, aye. Any members with reservations? Any members voting no? Without others voting aye, recommendation is adopted.
Okay, and with that, we are adjourned. Nope, sorry. I'm sorry, I got in my... Okay, HHS, same recommendation. Chair votes aye.
Any reservations? Any no's? Recommendation is adopted, Chair.
Okay, and now we can adjourn. Right now, the joint hearing is adjourned. Calling the 110 calendar for Health and Human Services. Oh, sorry, thank you very much.
I'll take it back then.
Okay, for HB 212, relating to homelessness, we have, excuse me, we have Jun Yang in support. Okay, Sonny Ganaden, Office of the Public Defender in Support. Hawaii State Council on Mental Health, providing comments. Keahalani Costa, County of Hawaii Office of Housing Community Development in Support. Angie Knight, Institute of Human Services in Support.
Hi, Angie Knight from IHS, Lo Ha Chair, Vice Chair, and Member of the Committee. Yes, IHS is in strong support of this program. It began as a local initiative that then was piloted by the state. And so we're just asking for the support to make it permanent. And also, we would like to emphasize the need for the full-time position, as the current contract does not have that. And we have seen that with a full-time position within the OHHS, this will only increase the amount of people who are being able to be served. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you very much. Next, Julian Anderson, Waikiki Neighborhood Board in Support. Nora in Support. Nora, are you present on Zoom? Please proceed.
Hello, Chair and Members. My name is Nora Ho. I am a student at the University of Hawaii, Social Work, and I'm working in the ER right now. I see a lot of people who come in the ER that are unhoused, not only seeking medical care, but also seeking resources for food insecurity, mental health crises, substance use. And a lot of these people came to Hawaii on a whim, unaware of the realities of homelessness in Hawaii, and who have expressed wanting to go back to their home state where their community supports are, where their families are. This is the most ethical and humane way, a very ethical and humane way to address homelessness in Hawaii and also free up resources for those who are living in Hawaii that are unhoused.
Okay, thank you very much. Next, we have Denise Boybert in Support. Kim Jorgensen in Support. Jan Balbado in Support. Ellen Godby-Carson in Support. Glenn Kagimada in Support. Thomas Lee, Hawaii Data Collaborative, providing comments. Anybody else wishing to testify in HB 212? Members, any questions? Okay, let's make it short because I...
Go be short, go be short. Yes.
Thank you.
I know they have this program, and we return to home program.
Yes.
But don't deep bed have a, if I'm not mistaken, VAS, right? Is it a...
That is with, in the Waikiki District.
Yeah.
There is a, that is a program that I think that is running through the Waikiki District Business Associations, but I'll double check on that one.
Yeah, I remember using them. It wasn't nothing to do with Waikiki. We did it three times in our community. We had, also this community, guys go back to the continent. Well, it's a very good program because the airport is very receptive if you don't have ID, all those kinds of credentials, and they escort you to the plane.
And I think that may have been adopted by the return to home pilot, and so it was working through that process.
Thank you. Small clarification.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much. Next, any other questions on HB 212? Okay, moving on. HB 213, relating to loan repayment for healthcare professionals. First up, we have, hold on, 213, Department of Health. Senior Advisor, Office of the Governor in Support. Will Kane, University of Hawaii System in Support. Lead One Conceal. Thank you very much. Laura Reichardt, Hawaii State Center for Nursing in Support. Hawaii State Council on Mental Health, Support. Chetah, are you in support?
Stand in strong support, Senator. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Office of County Clerk, Council Services, County of Hawaii in Support. Jonathan Chin, Kaiser Permanente, are you present on Zoom, Jonathan Chin?
Not present on Zoom, Chair.
Okay, please, okay. Pallani Smith, Liberty Dialysis in Support. Hawaii Association of Health Plans, Rachel Wilkinson in Support. Mike Wen, Aloha Care in Support. Are you present, Mike? Okay, Hawaii Health and Harm Reduction, Nikos Leverens in Support. Linda Bechner in Support. Healthcare Association of Hawaii in Support. Democratic Party of Hawaii in Support. Hawaii Health Systems Corporation in Support. Hawaii Medical Association in Support. Queen's Health Systems in Support. Hawaii Substance Abuse Coalition in Support. Hawaii Primary Care Association in Support. HMSA in Support. Hawaii Dental Association in Support. Hawaii Pacific Health in Support. And we have six other individuals all in support. Anybody else wishing to testify on HB 213 regarding loan repayment? Members, any questions? Okay, seeing none, moving on. HB 239, relating to child abuse. First up, we have Director Yamani, providing comments.
Yes, Senator Rick, yes, one.
Thank you very much. OHA Advocacy Office of Hawaiian Affairs in Support. Office of Wellness and Resiliency in Support. Hawaii Youth Services Network, Judith Clark.
Aloha, Chair, Members of the Committee. We just want to make the point that poverty does not equal child abuse or neglect. I talked with a parent from Maui whose children badly needed dental care, and they were under investigation by CPS for child neglect. The mother told me she had literally called every single dentist on Maui, and there was not one who would accept a new Medicaid client. The fact that her children did not get the dental care she needed was not her fault, it was not neglect or abuse. Thank you for this opportunity to testify.
Thank you very much. Hawaii Children's Action Network speaks. Noreen Cole, you're on Zoom. Please proceed. You have one minute.
Yes, thank you so much for the opportunity to provide testimony. I stand on our written testimony and just want to emphasize, many families in our state struggle to make ends meet, and we should be meeting them with direct, concrete, and economic supports in real time rather than child welfare involvement when there is no additional reason to believe that maltreatment is occurring. So this bill is a really important step alongside other measures towards distinguishing between poverty and neglect and meeting families where they are in community with support without stigma. So given the time, I'll just say we stand on our written testimony and also would like to add, if you could please pass this bill with an effective date of July 2025 rather than the date that's currently in the bill. Thank you so much again for the opportunity to testify.
Okay, thank you very much. Next, we have Marilyn Yamamata, Yamamoto, Hawaii Coalition of Child Protective Reform in Support. Catholic Charities in Support. Laura Tochiki in Support. Thank you very much. Chloe Franklin in Providing Comments. Chloe, are you present on Zoom?
Not present on Zoom, Chair.
Okay, Ellen Karen Worthington in Support. Ellen Awai in Support. Darrell Carlin in Support. Dylan Armstrong in Support. Olivia Hetzling in Support. Johnny May Perry in Opposition. Anybody else wishing to testify in HB 239? Members, any questions? Seeing none, moving on. HB 244, relating to Department of Human Services. First up, Department of Human Services, providing comments.
Senator Rick, yes, one.
Okay, Tricia Kajimura of PAT in Support.
Aloha, Chair, thank you. Aloha, Committee, Tricia Kajimura from Parents and Children Together. I just wanted to emphasize that this is asking for support to us to support the community and meet their needs, not get farther away from it, but getting closer to meet those community needs. We have some really big looming challenges ahead relating to funding in addition to not being able to meet our true costs. We have the federal funding crisis happening. We have insurance costs skyrocketing, and we really need this to continue serving. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm just going to note, I only have five more minutes. And if you folks can stand in your written testimony, I would really appreciate it. That way, we have five minutes to be able to do decision-making. And I know a lot of you have waited for a long time to be able to speak. So, and I have read your testimony, and I would not be hearing the bill if I wasn't already supportive of it, okay? So if you are really in opposition, then I'll let you speak. But knowing that I'm already, that's why I'm hearing it, okay? So, moving on. Angelina Mercado, Hawaii State Coalition Against Domestic Violence in Support. Thank you very much. Kat Brady, Community Alliance in Prisons in Support.
Strong support.
Thank you. Judith Clark, Hawaii Youth Services Network in Support.
Standing in very strong support.
Thank you very much. Noreen Cole, Hawaii Children's Action Network in Support on Zoom. Okay, Lori Lum, Child and Family Service in Support. Thank you. Nikos Leverens, Hawaii Health and Harm Reduction in Support. Niko, Nicholas, Noreen.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair. Stand in strong support of this bill. Mahalo.
Thank you. You too, Noreen. Can you stand on your testimony in support?
Yes, Chair, stand in strong support.
Thank you very much. Okay, Mike Wen, Aloha Care in Support. Mike, are you present on Zoom?
Not present on Zoom, Chair.
Amy Miller, Hawaii Food Bank in Support. Peter Silva in Support. Terrific. Alan Johnson, HSAQ in Support. Rachel Lewis, Easter Seals in Support. And about 15 other individuals and organizations all in support. Tatiana Bertolini, are you on Zoom? Okay, Tanya Braun, are you on Zoom?
Yes.
Okay, please proceed, Tanya.
Stand in support.
Thank you very much. Okay, anybody else wishing to testify on HB 244? HB 320, related to support, oh, members, any questions? Thank you very much. Okay, HB 320, relating to supportive decision-making. First up, we have Council on Developmental Disabilities in Support. Thank you. Director Yamani in Support.
We stand on our testimony in support.
Thank you. Carolyn Carter, Executive Office of Aging in Support.
Support, thank you.
Thank you. Shay Silver, I see you back there. I mentioned you. Disability and Communications Access Board in Support. Kirby Shaw. Okay, Office of Counsel, Hawaii in Support. Hawaii Disability Rights Center, Louis Erchak in Support.
Support, and we support the ED Council amendments.
I saw that. Thank you very much. Arken Hawaii in Support. James Kilger in Support. Hawaii State Advocacy and Advisory Council in Support. Easter Seals in Support. Anybody, and we have about 15 other, all individuals in support, including various organizations. Nobody in opposition. Anybody else wishing to testify in HB 320? Seeing none, moving on. Members, any questions? Okay, go on. Thank you very much. Okay, next up, we have Fall Prevention, HB 474. First up, Office of Aging, Department of Health in Support. Office of Aging in Support.
In Support, I'll stand, thank you.
Thank you. Elena Y in Support. Kathleen Y in Support. Anybody else wishing to testify? Seeing none, members, any, oh, come on up.
Madam Chair, so the, this is the Department of Health, and we are standing in strong support, but with an amendment, because we already have, based on Legislation Act 1533A, Injury Prevention Coordinator in the state. We're asking for the amendment for this funding to go to the Falls Campaign.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, anybody else wishing to testify in HB 474? Members, any questions? Moving on. HB 784, relating to health. First up, Department of Health in Support. Jack Lewin in Support. BP Advocacy Office of Hawaiian Affairs in Support. Haleka Inava in Support. Are you present, Haleka?
Strong support, thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. Karen Tashima, County of Hawaii, Office of the Mayor in Support. Kazewa Todd in Support. Hawaii Power Marshal Makale Fire Station in Support. HFD in Support. Daniel Sayre Foundation in Support. Laura Say, are you present on Zoom?
Not present on Zoom, Chair.
Okay, Edward Chu in Support. And we've got another 30 individuals all in support. Anybody else wishing to testify regarding, all in support, nobody in opposition. Anybody wishing to testify in HB 784? Members, any questions? Can we move on to decision-making? So first up, for HB 212, Chair's recommendation is to pass this as is. We are going to note the, in the committee report, the $50,000 request by State Office of Homeless and Housing Solution for the blank. Any comments, questions, concerns? Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote.
House Bill 212, House Draft Two, recommendation of the Chair to pass as is. Chair and Vice Chair vote aye. Senators Hashimoto and Keo Kalole are excused. Senator Favella.
Aye.
Recommendation is adopted, Chair.
Thank you very much. For HB 213, Chair's recommendation is to pass this as is. We're going to note on the committee report, the $15 million request for '25, '26, and '26, '27. Any comments, questions, concerns? Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote.
Okay, any reservations? Any no's? Recommendation is adopted, Chair.
So for HB 229, we're going to pass this with amendments. We're going to add in a paragraph that evidence of parental requests for support shall not be considered evidence of child abuse and neglect. We're also going to add in the committee report that unless the child is in substantial risk of harm, CPS should provide support rather than supervision to parents accused of neglect. Any comments, questions, concerns? Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote.
Okay, three members are present. Any reservations? Any no's? Recommendation is adopted.
So for HB 244, Chair's recommendation is to pass this with a different defective date of December 31, 2050. Any comments, questions, concerns? Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote.